All right, good evening. We're going to call this regularly scheduled Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. It is, I believe, 7:00 PM right now. Rural call shows that all the commissioners are present except for Commissioner John Adams. We're going to go ahead and have a Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Robertson, and we're going to have an invocation by Josh Adams.
All rise. Please join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father and Heavens, thankful for the opportunity to have to gather here this day as a council and as community members. And as we gather, we ask that thou would bless us with thy Spirit, that we might be able to make good decisions that would benefit the community and the people that live within our community. Please bless us that we might have enlightened minds and that we might be able to do the things that thou would want us to do and that we can help improve our way of living. We're thankful for all our blessings and we say things in the name just Christ. Amen.
All right, seeing that we have no old business, we'll go to item number six, new business, a conditional use permit application submitted by Plan Murphy to allow for a monopine cell tower on property located at 200 West McNeil. With that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Fektor Carter.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Declan Murphy of Sprint has submitted a conditional use permit or CUP to allow for a monopine cell tower located at 200 West McNeil in order to address a gap in service coverage. The subject property is currently utilized as the Arizona Department of Transportation or ADOT road yard and Arizona Department of Public Safety, DPS, Cholo office. It is on C1, which is neighborhood commercial, and C2, which is general commercial. Placement of a wireless telecommunications tower requires a CUP at this location. The applicant proposes to lease a portion of the ADOT subject property and place an 80-foot-tall monopine in the southwest corner of the subject property. The monopine will disguise one microwave antenna, six SOC antennas, and nine remote radio heads, or RRH. There is a 12-foot-wide access and utility easement that will be utilized by the applicant. The monopine will be approximately 538 feet from the north property line, 745 feet from the east property line, 281 feet from the south property line, and 308 feet from the west property line. Additionally, the monopine is 79 feet from the nearest structure on the subject property. The entire subject property is currently surrounded with a 6-foot-high chain-link fence. In addition, the applicant has proposed a 50-by-50-foot-long, 8-foot-tall fence to surround the monopine and associated equipment. The current zoning of the surrounding properties includes, to the north, MH, which is manufactured housing; to the south, C2, general commercial; to the east, C1, neighborhood commercial; and C2, general commercial; and to the west, MH, manufactured housing and R2-7, which is single-family and multiple-family residential, 7,000 square feet. Current land uses of the surrounding properties includes, to the north, residential; to the south, Hatch Motor Company; to the east, Horseshoe Trailer Park and Casey Motel; and to the west, residential. Transmitting memos were sent to all affected agencies. Applicable comments received include: The building officials stated that the monopine requires a building permit and shall meet all city building codes, including footings and wind loads. The property was posted and letters were sent to all property owners within 300 feet of the subject property. Staff received two phone calls, one with general questions regarding the proposal and the other expressing perceived health concerns of cell towers. After reviewing the standards for review, the zoning ordinance, discussions with the applicant, and because this request is consistent with the City of Cholo's general plan, staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission approve conditional use permit 60204-220 submitted by Declan Murphy to allow for a monopine cell tower located at 200 West McNeil, subject to the following conditions. One, all development shall comply with all federal, state, and local requirements, including FCC, which is Federal Communications, Federal Aviation, FAA, and building permit requirements. The antenna and/or supporting mechanisms shall not exceed 80 feet. No further expansions are allowed unless approved through future CUPs, and this CUP shall not be transferable. Staff, as well as the applicant, are available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Fektor Carter. Is there any questions for staff from the commission? All right. Seeing none, I'll ask if there's any questions for the applicant from the commission. All right, at this time, I'm going to go ahead and open it up for a public hearing. I'm going to ask that anybody who would like to address the commission on this agenda item, to please come forward and state your name as well as your address for the record.
My name is Afton Johnston. The address of the property that I own by this is 200 North Fourth Avenue. My concern is not the tower itself, but the location of it. My dad was one, my grandfather's were original pioneers to Cholo, and was the property that we own there, is some of that original property. I remember growing up, I grew up here in Cholo, sitting with my dad out on the front porch watching the sun come up in the east. Always such a beautiful sight. Over the years, this property has deteriorated to now that area is really, looks like a slump, and it is drawing people that are not, that are generally, I think, renters. Most recently, there's been a big tent-looking apparatus erected almost in front of Dad's property, and the value of the property just continues to go downhill. Now, I think cell towers are a great thing, and nobody uses their phone more than I do, but I don't want a cell tower in front of that house or on the west side of that property all along Fourth Avenue. It just is going downhill so fast. Recently, there is a trailer park behind Dad's property that is so infested with drug use. We've had all kinds of problems with it, and I think one of the big problems is that property is tucked away now. It's kind of off back in the hill, back in the woods. And all of these buildings that are being erected, cell towers, they just bring the whole idea that nobody's looking and nobody's watching. And I want to tell you, I've called the cops numbers of times over that property and can get little done about it. So, the erection of a cell tower there, I am very opposed to it. My suggestion is, can the cell tower be put in the middle of the commercial part of the property where it does not continue to deteriorate the value of us property owners? It's a big concern for me. And if anybody had asked me about that tent structure they got, and I want to say too, I really appreciate the fact that letters were sent this time, that we actually get to at least voice an opinion. Because when I saw that building going up, I couldn't believe it. I just could not believe it. That was being erected right there in front of our property, right, almost right direct in front of it. So, that's my opposition to this. Not the cell tower itself, but the location, and I would gratefully appreciate it not being located on the west side of that big lot. And let me just tell you, we used to catch the bus on that same property in high school, when we had to go to Snowflake. There was little state, you know, the state had business there, but it has just expanded and expanded and expanded to now. I personally feel it's a real eyesore. And I guess the city owns it and leases it out to the state, but boy, I'll tell you, I hate to see it continue to be developed into a commercial, any more commercial than it already is. We have so much planned around here. Can't the state take their stuff? Go someplace else and let this be a nice part of Cholo, right in the heart of this city. So, that's my two cents worth. And again, I would just really ask that that cell tower not be erected close to residential areas. My dad's house is, you know, is built on the property, but even manufactured homes, there should not be a cell tower across the street from him. So, thank you for the time.
Thank you, ma'am.
I mean, am I supposed to leave the questions?
Does anybody on the commission have a question or would like to? At this point with Johnson, I think staff has some clarifications that they're going to want to talk about real quick.
Sure, if I could. So, first of all, the location of the tower, we do have a map.
Can you see it on your screen right there, ma'am? There should be a computer screen that is right there.
Turned on there in front of you.
Okay.
Can you see that rendering there? Okay, great.
Is that where it's going to be?
That's the proposed location, yes.
Okay, I would not be opposed to that.
Okay, great. And also, ma'am, did you get a chance to look at the, these were sitting in front of me, they're the artist's rendering of what the tree might look like when it's done? This is what the view could possibly be from, it looks like on West McNeil, looking to the east from Fourth Avenue, from, it looks around the property of either your property or father's property. That's kind of what that red box right there might look like, where the proposal of what the tower would look like as far as the, looking like a pine tree there.
It is going to look like a pine tree. That's a great idea. I've seen them look like palm trees and, you know, different things. That's great. That's a great idea.
Okay, great, great.
If I could kind of tag on to that, I'm going to, oh, sorry, I meant to go backwards, not forward. So, as Chairman Clark alluded to, we do have a site plan showing the proposed area for the tower. And we put a nice little pine tree right there in the middle. They are proposing to make it look as much like a pine tree as you can make a cellphone tower look like a pine tree. It's approximately 300 feet or so from north Fourth Avenue, approximately 538 feet from Ellsworth, and about 281 feet from West McNeil. The tent structure that was brought up is kind of up here on this northwest corner. We share the same concerns. This is not a city property. It's owned by ADOT. Under state law, ADOT does not have to come to the city for building permits, and they don't have to comply with our zoning requirements. We wish they did, because you wouldn't have that tent like you see there. We would have liked to have seen it somewhere else on the property or in a different format, but we have no control over that. And just for the commission and for members of the public, we have been working with ADOT now for a number of years, attempting to get them to relocate from this site to a property more conducive to what they do out in the industrial park. We continue to work with them. We're hopeful that someday those efforts will come to fruition, and we'll see something besides an ADOT yard in the middle of town. But as of now, it is what it is, and, you know, we have to work with it the best we can. So, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you for coming and voicing your concerns. We do appreciate it.
I really appreciate the opportunity to have a voice in it. Thank you.
I would like to ask her one question.
Yeah, of course. Please come back there to the microphone.
I heard you talking as Mr. Taggaskis was explaining things. Did you say that now seeing where the location is, that you feel more comfortable with it there?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to verify that you had said that.
Yes, and the fact that it's going to look like a pine tree, I think, is just a wonderful concept.
So, do you feel that you have any concerns then now, based on what you're seeing tonight?
No, I don't. They've really been resolved. I feel much better about it. You can see the 200 North Fourth Avenue is right there at the corner. That's Dad's place. My father is deceased. I am the owner, but it will always be Dad's house to me. I just didn't want anything going up again by that big ugly structure that's there, that I thought, oh, no, now a cell tower. You mean, it's just, you know, the property really has devalued over the year, which is, and that's, that house is on nearly an acre and a half of property. It's not a small thing. But, boy, all these things really, people just don't want to live, you know? They don't want to invest in that kind of environment.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your input.
Thank you. Any other members of the public, this is still a public hearing, would like to come up and address the commission, ask that you state your full name as well as where your residence is, so we can get that on the record.
Good evening. My name's Rex Brown, and I live on 81 North Fourth Drive. So, I'm approximately, probably about 300 feet from where this property touches Fourth Avenue. And I was curious, I'm glad you showed a kind of actual indication to where the tower was. I didn't know how close it was going to be to Fourth Avenue. I'm not opposed to a tower being there, and I'm glad you guys, thank you for sending out the information to let us know so we can, you know, ask questions about this. Because I mostly, I guess my main concern is, with what you're hearing, concerns about radiation, all that, what types of precautions are being taken to ensure public safety as far as cellular towers when they're installed? Is there anything directly done with that?
I think that would be an answer for, that the applicant can answer. So, after you're done with addressing the commission, we'll ask him to come up and address that.
Okay.
Specifically, you're wondering about radiation frequencies and potential cancers.
Yeah, because I know there have been independent studies saying cancer rates have gone up quite a bit in areas where cellular towers were located over a number of years. And I know in that area, probably in a 300 to 400-foot radius, there's probably a couple hundred people living around there. As the lady mentioned, there's a couple of different trailer parks. There's one right at the end of my street, that probably 100 people or so are there. And my street is a dead-end street, and I'm living in my mom and dad's old house. And so, in a straight shot, I can see the property very well, and I was a little concerned if it was very close to Fourth Avenue, that I would be, you know, 200 to 300 feet from the tower or so. That was my main concern, was just I wanted to find out any safety issues, any concerns, how those are being addressed. I do have a little concern, the tower being said 80-foot tall, you know, what it's actually going to look like. The pictures and everything you showed, I think, will help as far as alleviating that, that it's not a real scenic property anyway, with everything that is there from the state. So, I'm glad that is, the location is going to be a little further away from the Fourth Avenue side than what I was initially thinking. So, that was my main concern. And again, like I said, I'm not really opposed to the cell tower, and I understand there's a need for those things. But I am concerned very much that sometimes these things are done, and, you know, I want to make sure that proper precautions, safety precautions, and things are taken care of for the radiation, high-frequency radiation.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you have the applicant come up here and state your name for the record as well, and then just, I think at this time, the commission might have more questions for you. If not, if you'd mind addressing this gentleman's concern, that'd be great.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Declan Murphy, representing Sprint, 2166 East University Drive in Tempe, Arizona. To address Mr. Brown's concerns, so with this type of site, essentially, it's regulated by the FCC. So, you know, Sprint is a licensed carrier. So, therefore, the maximum emissions that would be allowed for a site like this, Sprint would probably emit less than 5% of what the FCC would deem to be safe. So, to put that in perspective, it's a very, I've been doing this for 20 years in Arizona. It's always, you know, it's a very common question and obviously understandable question. But if you look at other types of devices, just to give you an idea from a common sense standpoint, you probably have more exposure on a phone than you would have from the actual tower itself. But also, you would have more exposure from a wireless baby monitor or a cordless home phone than you will from this tower. And that's all measurable, and that's not just me. I mean, that's, I would be happy to share some of that data that I have with Mr. Brown, and also go to the American Cancer Society. There's lots of resources. Of course, you can go online and Google anything and be scared, you know, but there are measurements. There are, as a practical matter, this is measurable, the emissions. But we, so with this site, it would put out less than 5% of what the FCC deems to be safe. And so, with that, and so, also just to address Ms. Johnson's concerns, we tried really hard to go on the Pioneer College Tower. It's there. It's a huge tower. We felt that it had capacity, and it looks like that it did have capacity. And we went back more than once, and they said, no, each time we went there, because to go on an existing tower is the best solution for everybody, is the fastest way to get a site on air. It just makes sense as a practical matter. So, we spent, we've worked on this. I've reached out to Justin on a number of times. We've looked at various properties over the last year and a half, because Sprint really has an issue in Cholo. And we actually had approached ADOT initially as well, and they said no a few times, and we finally got them to agree to a site, and that's why we ended up where we are. And so, with that, we're trying, you know, we're trying to do a very good monopine. We're even proposing what's known as SOCs on the antennas, which is basically leaves. So, we're doing everything we can to make it look the best-looking monopine, given the location, and there are some, you know, existing pine trees on the property. So, as opposed to proposing a monopole or some kind of a tower, we, off the bat, you know, are proposing a monopine and the best monopine that we can actually do from an aesthetic standpoint. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Hello, thank you. Is there any scheduled emissions testing done on a regular basis for these things, just to have some sort of idea of what is actually coming out of them?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Robertson, it is, it's possible to do that, and it's required sometimes. Some ministers will ask carrier to do it, and, you know, what they do is they'll send out an engineer and just measure. But we would know offhand, based on the equipment, what the emissions are. And obviously, you know, in this case, like I say, less than 5% of what the FCC deemed safe is what this will emit. So, you know, from that perspective, it's, you know, even if you were a conspiracy theorist, you know, less than 5% of what they deem safe, and that's a kind of a global standard, actually. So, you know, that's what it, that's what it means, really, as far as the emissions go.
But as far as an automatic, like so many times a year, or so many times a decade, or something, is there any kind of automated testing period?
Not really, other than we have to comply with what the FCC requires. And so, the carriers typically wouldn't go out and measure. We would measure, it would be fairly common if you were on a rooftop, where you would have, like, let's say, four carriers on the same rooftop. And in that scenario, where you might have workers, like, near ACs, for example, a worker might have to go in front of antennas. At that distance, you know, you have to be concerned, and you're usually able to measure, because, and you will, you know, there are strict guidelines as far as noticing, you know, if somebody's up close to an antenna, whether it's a panel or a microwave or whatever. But, you know, if you notice those, most of the antennas on the Pioneer Tower are microwaves. Now, they do put out a lot of power. A microwave antenna of those sizes are really, you know, you wouldn't want to, you would, as a practical matter, I wouldn't want to stand in front of one of those at all, because that's a whole different emission completely. Because the larger the microwave, it tells me there's, it's shooting long distance, which means there's a lot of power being emitted. So, that's, that would be of concern. But usually, they're, I mean, they're fairly high up on that tower. So, you know, they're shooting a beam, and they're shooting really above everything that's in Cholo, kind of thing, unless you were, you know, on an elevated area and you were in the direct line of sight. Because they are a direct line of sight, they would be cause for concern from an emissions standpoint. You'd have to be careful with that with microwaves. And I don't know much about the college as far as what they have to do as far as being compliant, but, but yeah, microwaves would be of concern, but panel antennas such as this is a whole different.
Thank you.
Ms. Murphy, any other questions from Mr. Hefter?
So, bandwidth-wise, is it 3G, 4G?
It should be, it'll be 4G. At some point, I expected it would be 5G. 5G is a huge game changer, actually. I know if you're, if you're all familiar with 5G and what it's going to mean. What it means in rural Arizona, it's a big deal, because what will happen is with, take Sprint or T-Mobile or one of the lower-cost carriers, you know, in an area, rural Arizona, for example, with 5G, you're talking about 500 megabyte to a gigabyte speed. So, let's say if you have an unlimited data plan, which you can get for 50 bucks, Sprint and T-Mobile have edged that, you know, raised their pricing when 5G comes along for a number of years. But what it means is now, if you have a $50, $60 a month unlimited plan, now you can avail of probably up to 500 megabytes in data, which every phone has a hotspot. So, if you're in your home, you're telling your hotspot. Now, you have, you know, speeds equivalent to any major city, and you have it for a fraction of the cost that you would pay your typical broadband. So, it's a big game changer for rural areas. And of course, there's a whole host of technologies that come with 5G. There's a whole host of security measures, cybersecurity, medical monitoring, you know, autonomous vehicles. So, overall, it's, you know, technology-wise, it's going to be a positive in that respect. So, but right now, this site would be 4G off the bat, but I expected some point it would be 5G. And it's also designed to be colocatable. And this site, if another carrier wants to come along and improve coverage, you know, this site could accommodate probably three carriers. So, you know, and again, they'll be all concealed within the branches. So, it's a good, you know, it's a, it's a benefit right there, because again, you know, nobody's going to, if any carrier was looking to improve coverage in Cholo, they would certainly look at this, because it would be the least pattern of resistance and the most costly to locate on this as opposed to even think about a new site.
Ms. Hefter, are you done?
Yes, thank you, thank you.
So, to clarify, you're only using cellphone antennas. You're not doing any microwave backhaul at all?
There is a microwave proposed backhaul, but we hopefully won't have to use it. It's a precaution. But really, we want, we're working on getting fiber in there. But there is a one-foot microwave that's showing on there, but hopefully we won't end up using it. That's our plan.
Thank you.
Because most, most modern sites with 4G and definitely with, you know, 5G is impossible without fiber. But even 4G is impossible without fiber, because it's just not reliable in the backhaul, you know? Without fiber is just, there's no, there's very few sites that are, that are, there are probably a few throughout rural Arizona, but, you know, if, at any cost, they try and bring fiber to the site. Just a matter of the way the industry works.
Thank you.
Yes, I just want to follow up, because you said that, that you could add more power through the branches, that you would kind of just build it in there. Now, would that change the 5% emission?
It would. It would probably increase it by a few. It may not increase it much more than 5%, but it would actually have a cumulative effect. So, if you had two carriers or three carriers, yeah, you're going to have, you, it still probably will be within 10%.
10%?
But, I mean, but that would be something at that point, you could ask, you could ask that. If a second carrier comes along, you could ask them to actually measure, because at that point, you know, it wouldn't be out of the, it wouldn't be unheard of to ask for a measurement. It was two or three carriers on a site. It wouldn't be unheard of to ask to.
Okay, I would like to follow that up with Mr. Bishop, Vice Chair Bishop, asked, if the, if there was any microwave, and you said there is a small one there?
Yeah.
And that's only as a backup measure? So, what would produce a backup measure?
So, what we need, what we're planning here is to bring physical fiber, which means every cell tower, every time you make a call, your signal goes from your phone to the tower, but from the tower, it has to go back to a switch, which could be in Phoenix or it could be in Colorado, but it really has to go back there in nanoseconds. And without fiber, even T1s nowadays, they're not effective, or you'd have to have just a huge number of T1s. So, every tower is connected to a fiber connection that routes that call to wherever the switch is. It could be in California, it could be other states, but it all happens in nanoseconds. But for data, you have to have fiber nowadays in a modern site, otherwise, you're just not going to be able to handle the traffic. And it's all about data.
So, then this is going to be equipped with? So, so then this is going to be equipped with fiber?
Yes, yes.
And so then why is the backup microwave needed?
Because fiber, uh, you could, uh, put a request into Centrelink or Cox or Comcast today and they'll get to you and they'll get to you. It's as simple as that, even, even in Phoenix.
So it's a matter of not having the fiber available?
Right, they, they will, they will put in motion when, like, for example, we, I have a number of sites, even in the city of Phoenix that we're working on. And we'll, we'll engage, uh, either typically down there at Centrelink or Cox. And we'll engage them today and it could be six months before they get fiber to the site. Now, there's a whole host of reasons for that. It could be physically running the line and getting the easements to do so. Um, there's a whole host of challenges there. But that's really the fear is that we really can't, um, have a site without fiber. But if we have to, or we know there's a sharp period of time, we'll, we'll shoot a microwave from, from one site.
And my last question then is, um, if the microwave part goes into effect, what is the emission rate at that point?
It'll be negligible there because it's such a small microwave and for, for our purposes, it won't make it much.
Under 10?
Yeah, definitely under 10 for sure. It'll, it'll be a short hop because, uh, they've, they must have looked at where the nearest site is and I, I wasn't privy to that. But because it's a one foot microwave dish, it's a very low powered unit, it's really.
Okay, thank you very much.
Just to clarify, so the, the microwave would be redundancy, correct?
It, it'll be redundancy in the sense that we, if we don't have fiber there, let's say, and I don't know the timeframe of when we can actually get to build a site. But let's say if we actually start to, we want, if Sprint decides to go build a site and we, you know, once we get all our building permits and there's a, there's a whole host of environmental, um, um, approvals we need as, as, as we do with all of these sites. Um, so, you know, would, it would enable us to build a site and get it up and running while whoever's bringing fiber, in this case, I think it's probably Comcast in this market, I'm not sure. But, but that's, but they've already been engaged on the fiber. So.
And the second, second question I have is, when you say 10%, um, you're saying 10% of what's allowed, not 10% of overall, right? Okay, so 100% would still be allowed by FCC?
100% would be deemed safe, that's a kind of a global standard.
So you're 90% below that?
Right, so, you know, and to that point, as a practical matter, it's, if they deem 100% safe and we're 5%, you know, you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you. All right, I'm going to go ahead and close out the, uh, public hearing at this time and I'm going to, uh, bring it back to the commission, uh, for us to, uh, discuss, uh, possible motion, uh, if there's any other questions or anything of that nature.
Vice Chairman. I move to approve CUP permit 602-04-220 submitted by Declan Murphy to allow for a monopining cell tower located at 200 West McNeil, subject to staff recommendation.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a second by Commissioner Robertson. We'll call for the vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Tregaskas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, with any conditional use permit, there is a seven day appeal period. If no appeal is received by the city clerk within the, the next seven days, this conditional use permit will be considered effective.
Thank you. Um, before I read the call to the public, I don't see anybody coming forward. My son is sitting in the back and I'm pretty sure he doesn't want to address us. I'm going to dispense with the boilerplate and, uh, go to item number eight for approval of minutes. I'll entertain a motion.
Here, so I don't feel I should.
Does anybody have any changes to the minutes or anything that they think is out of order? And I will move to approve the minutes, um, from the regular zoning commission meeting on April 9th and the study session on April 9th. Do I have a second? I have a motion and, uh, vice chairman is the second. I will, uh, call for the vote, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Great, we are at summary of current events. I will start with you, Mr. Heffner.
So last time I said I was glad to be here, still glad to be here. And it's, uh, been very interesting to hear questions by everybody wanting to know what's going on and I don't have any knowledge, so. It's okay that, uh, the planning and zoning, it's, it's a very interesting position to have people come and ask me questions about everything, um, including buildings I didn't even know existed. Or don't exist.
Uh, I'd just like to congratulate the city of Cholo for, um, a great Cholo days. My family and I got to participate in some of that and they did, uh, and, um, it was excellent. And we're just really happy that that was part of our hometown and that we were well represented.
I just think that Cholo has done a great job putting on the farmer's market and the Saturdays. Everything that's going on is beneficial and people are coming and very excited about it.
And I would just like to say, we are coming up quickly on the 4th of July. Oh my goodness, it's going to be here before we know it. And just be fire safe, everyone, we don't want any fires at all and campfires as well.
And I know there's a lot of planned activities for the 4th of July, so hopefully everyone can attend those. And there'll be a lot of people up here, I'm sure. So sometimes that's frustrating, but, um, we also need our visitors as well.
Yes, we do.
Great, thank you. I don't have anything, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Tregaskas.
Uh, yes, as already mentioned, uh, we do have quite a few events that are scheduled for the 4th of July. Uh, always a very popular, not even just a weekend anymore, popular week up here. Uh, we anticipate that we're going to have quite a few people, uh, taking part in our hospitality with the 4th of July being on a Thursday. Uh, we think they'll come up and they'll stretch out the weekend. So certainly we invite them. Few things that we do have going on, the parade does start at nine o'clock. That runs down the Deuce Clubs, uh, starting at Owens and ending just right here at White Mountain Road. Uh, following the parade, we have, uh, a wet zone, um, at the Frontier Fields. That will last until about 2:00 PM or so. Uh, following that, we will have, uh, activities taking place at the high school on the football field. They'll have different games, uh, different vendors. Uh, starting in the evening, they'll have some live bands performing. And then at nine o'clock, they will have the fireworks show. Um, so again, we invite everybody to participate in those. Like to reemphasize, please be safe and careful. Uh, and make sure you get your hamburger and hot dog buns early because by the end of the weekend, there probably won't be any left in town. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Um, I will, do we call for a vote for the adjournment or can I just adjourn it? All right, if there's an objection to us adjourning, you can stay here by yourself. Meeting adjourned, thank you.